Hello, everybody. Welcome. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order. Today is Thursday, December 15, 2022, and it is 6:30 PM. Hey, this is my first time conducting a meeting, so please bear with me tonight. Sean Grayson, City Manager, would you please read our tribal recognition?
My pleasure. We acknowledge the Niisnan people are still here among us today, though they are nearly invisible and their story continues to be excluded from history. We understand we are on Niisnan land that was never ceded, and the original tribal families have yet to recover from the near genocide of their people. As a resident or visitor in Niisnan land, we support the Nevada City Ranchery and Niisnan Tribe in efforts to stabilize their people as well as the campaign to restore tribal sovereignty through federal recognition.
Thank you. And Councilmember Cece, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a note that Councilmember Peterson and Keith Collins from the City Attorney's Office are joining us via Zoom tonight. Mayor Fleming and Councilmember Klein will not be in attendance this evening. We will certainly miss them. And also, our Madam Deputy City Clerk Gabby is unfortunately out. Taking her place this evening is City Planner Amy Wolfson. Amy, would you please give us a roll call?
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Cece?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Fernandez?
Here.
And Councilmember Klein and Mayor Fleming are absent tonight.
Great. I would like to invite Mr. Neil Locke to the podium to share some bits of history with us. Here he comes.
Sound and visual.
Very festive.
It'll take an hour before it ends.
Uh-oh.
I can't turn it off. I can only turn it on.
It's singing. It's a singing tie.
The tie is holding us hostage.
It's done. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and the audiences, the live and the Zoomers. This will be the last Neil's knick-knack until 2022. The nick. Today is the Bill of Rights Day. It was a joint resolution done in 1941 proclaiming today Bill of Rights Day. And the basis for the Bill of Rights dates back to... When working to organize or control something that is uncontrollable, you may say that is a task like herding cats. It is unclear exactly when this idiom started being used. They believe it was inspired by Monty Python's "Life of Brian." He was manager managing senior programs is like herding cats. And today is the International Tea Day, which you will then you will attend a tea party at which you will wear your pearls in celebration. Because it's the National Lemon Cupcake Day.
I did bring a lemon cupcake.
Oh, you did. Good. Somebody can eat it then. Now I have to put these on.
Do you have pearls, Neil?
Yes.
Darn it.
Right there. One type of cupcake that was so named because it was baked in a container that looked like a cup. There were pottery cups, moles, ramekins, and predated muffin tins. This definition is still in use. The other type of cake was named because of its recipe, which measured out in cups instead of being weighed like a pound cake. Now the knacks. Plumbers, the day after Thanksgiving, is their busiest day of the year due to the increased amount of house calls regarding clogged drains, broken garbage disposal, and despite its monikers, not clogged toilets. In 1920, new car sales were failing, so the industry promoted the term "jaywalking" to blame accidents on pedestrians rather than aggressive drivers. Before the Industrial Revolution, silver didn't need to be polished because there was less sulfur in the atmosphere unless you lived near a volcano. The Earth mass now can be expressed as six bronograms after scientists voted to add new metric prefixes. Salotobronograms and quetameters, international scientists gathered in France and voted on Friday for the new metric prefixes to express the world's largest and smallest measurements prompted by the ever-growing amount of data. Join the ranks of the well-known prefixes like kilo and melee are rona and quetta for the larger numbers and ronto and queto for the smallest. A yottometer is one followed by 24 zeros. If we think of mass instead of distance, the Earth weighs approximately six bronograms, which is a six followed by 27 zeros. Jupiter is about two quetograms, which the two is followed by 30 zeros. Camouflage clothing has been developed in England that animals will not see you as well as the predators. There are 14 different holidays celebrated of different faiths in this country. So when you have used the term happy holiday, you are celebrating everyone's holiday. And I know there are five of them: Hanukkah, Christmas, Boxing Day, Kwanzaa, and my birthday. And before I just when I left, there's a hangover cure for ingredients: a vitamin B complex, magnesium pill, folic acid supplement, and you wash it down with an electrolyte. But the best cure for a hangover is not to drink too much. And thank you and a very happy new year and a Merry Christmas and a happy Kwanzaa.
Thank you, Neil. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday and happy holidays.
See you next year.
See you next year in 2023.
The chief, I must congratulate him again, of having people on policemen on the streets during the Victorian Christmas. We hear more compliments in the store about, oh, there's someone out there. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Neil. And just a note, Councilmember Peterson, because this is a new situation for for us. When you speak or cough or whatever, it does come through the microphone here. So just just a heads up.
Yeah, I just muted. I'll remain muted unless I'm speaking, attempting to speak.
I like it when you speak, and we're sure to hear you this time. All right, now we're going to move on to the adoption of the agenda. This is now a time for any agenda modifications, which include any changes to the agenda, pulling of consent items, or any recusals to announce. Do we have any of those council members? Okay, I'm looking for a motion and second to adopt the agenda.
A second?
Great. We have a motion by Lou and a second by Gary. Those in favor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, unanimous, three to zero. Motion carries. Thank you so much. And now we're going to move on to the presentation portion. Moving over to Sean Grayson about a memoriam.
Very nice.
For James Jim Anderson.
Perfect. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. On November 18, after our last City Council meeting, the Union published an obituary for Jim Anderson, which I'd like to share with you. James Robert Jim Anderson, 74, passed away on October 23, 2022, in Petaluma, California, surrounded by his family and friends, both near and far blessing and loving him on his way across the vales back to his beloved. He was born on November 19, 1947, in Houston, I'm sorry, in Houlton, the son of Robert and Phyllis Anderson. Jim lived his final three years with Parkinson's disease with his daughter Andrea Anderson and his son-in-law, David Dusterhoff, and his granddaughter Lila Beatrice. Jim lived with overt Parkinson's disease for over 11 years, showing everyone in his life how gracefully let go of many of the things he loved and was known for, which included pickup basketball twice a week. It says, being one of the few old dudes still on the court. His law practice, long and fast-paced walks and hikes, skiing, and his ability to manage a two-wheel-drive vehicle in all weather conditions. And lastly, his mental acuity. One of the things that was never taken from him was his deep love and devotion to his family and friends and his sense of compassion for others. Jim understood that life is a challenge and that people are truly doing the best they know. He was quick to understand and to forgive. Jim was the first of five industrious boys. Growing up, the boys spent most of their time outdoors, building tunnels in snowbanks, skiing and ice skating in the open land before their home, swimming and water skiing at Drew's Lake, and getting into mischief with the neighborhood buddies. One infamous moment that is now a family favorite to retell is when the Anderson boys and their friends were kicked out of the boring Sunday afternoon matinee for playing tag on their hands and knees in the aisles of the theater. They were booed and laughed at as they exited the back door. After graduating from high school with honors in 1965, he attended Northeastern University in Boston, graduating with an engineering degree in 1970. Thinking he would most likely be drafted, he made an impulsive decision to go out to California for the summer. Taking a short course in bartending, he bartended that summer in San Jose and spent the weekends in Santa Cruz. By the time the draft ended that year, Jim had fallen in love with California, and the next chapter of his life on the West Coast seemingly unfolded. Jim attended Hastings School of Law in San Francisco and shortly thereafter met his soon-to-be-wife Gloria Andrea Villauer. They married in 1974, and their first child, Andrea, was born in 1976. And they were looking for a smaller community, and they found Nevada City. Jim was opened his own law practice and became the city attorney for Nevada City here for us for many years, and for a period of time was also Grass Valley City Attorney. I don't know how those battles worked, but Jim loved being outside and spent countless weekends at the nursery buying trees, plants, and seeds for his garden and property. On March 11, 1986, his son Brett was born. Jim loved his children dearly and loved being a father. His children will remember cooking dinner, wrestling with them on the living room floor, snuggling them nightly, and telling them tales of his childhood. Jim is survived by his daughter Andrea Anderson and her husband David, and their daughter Lila of Petaluma, Brett Anderson of Seattle, Washington, brothers John Anderson and his wife Candace of East Millinocket, Thomas Anderson and wife Pamela of Houlton, Mark and wife Kathy of Hodgson, and Christopher and his wife Lee of Amherst, New Hampshire. A celebration of life is going to be held later. They haven't set a date, and the family has asked that condolences be expressed to the Dunn Funeral Home. We did reach out to his family. Unfortunately, none of them could be with us this evening. His daughter does live in Petaluma. Nonetheless, I appreciate the council allowing me to share his obituary in honor of our former city attorney.
Thank you so much, Sean, and thank you, Jim, for your service to Nevada City. Next, we have a city partner introduction. Dawn, please let us know what we've got in store for this evening.
All right. Well, the same as Barry Uvalantrust, who came, I don't know, several meetings ago. I do not have any employees to introduce you to, so we brought our partners. So tonight, Jeff Lauder from Sierra Streams Institute is here to tell you a little bit about what they do and how they've partnered with the city.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think we have some slides. Yeah, thanks for the invite. This is a really cool model that you guys have going to kind of reintroduce ourselves to the city. And I know there's been turnover at the city and the council and turnover at our own organizations. So kind of getting back in touch with you guys, I think, is really nice. Can we do it like full screen?
Trying to figure. I don't see.
I mean, it's fine this way, either way. Well, as we're doing this, basically, Sierra Streams Institute, so we are a community and citizen science group based here in Nevada City. So we like to say that we put science in the hands of the people. We have six core programs: monitoring and research, education, forest health, community lab, which is basically our water quality lab. We do heavy metals analysis, water quality analysis in-house, both for the city and for community partners. And then also, community members can bring in samples. They could be running samples for Bitney Springs and People's Private Ponds and all those kinds of things. We're the only actual in-house nonprofit lab in the region. We do rural health work. So for example, breast cancer incidence rates relative to gold mine exposure, and then restoration and management, kind of broadly speaking. Go to the next slide. So we actually started in 1995 as Friends of Deer Creek. So being a Friends group, it was just a group of concerned citizens, actually right here on Deer Creek, below the Pine Creek Bridge, noticed some kind of foamy, interesting colored water coming out by Stiles Mill and asked, hey, what's going on there? No one knew. So they got together with a retired scientist, chemist, and put together some protocols to basically reconnect themselves with the scientific process, be informed, you know, have concerns, citizens doing real science. And then they monitored the reconstruction of the Pine Street Bridge. Since then, they then expanded out, and by 2010 had metamorphosized into Sierra Streams Institute, which included an expansion into the realms of environmental education, mine waste remediation, forest health, and kind of numerous myriad other projects. Go to the next slide. So here's where we are today, kind of the four main kind of zones or topics that we really focus on are forest health. So my background is actually as a forest ecologist. So we're doing a lot of current forest research on fuel treatments, what works, what doesn't, what we can learn from fires, how fire severity is influenced by forest health, and how we can then incorporate that into management. Stream health is still our core program. We 've been monitoring water quality and doing what we call bioassessments, so using bugs in the stream to tell us about biological response for more than 25 years. Human health is a really exciting kind of avenue of our research right now. We have two papers about to come out in academic journals that will then be released through Yubanet and other areas locally, partnered with University of Arizona and UC San Francisco on breast cancer rates in Gold Country and how they're higher than the rest of the state and drivers of that. And then just general disturbance research. So that map on the bottom right circle is burn severity mapping of the Jones Fire, which actually burned down our office, and using what we learned from mapping burn severity and kind of high-resolution, cool satellite-driven data to then drive forest management. And all this then feeds into community science at all ages. Next slide. So kind of just some example flagship projects. Right now, we have some work looking at climate change impacts on the Deer Creek watershed, which is our home watershed, some modeling, for example, climate change impacts based on all the data we've collected over 25 years out into 100 years in the future to try to plan for resilience, landscape change over time, post-fire recovery over time, all using kind of these big data satellite-driven tools. And then lots of, like I said, fire and forest management. One of the most exciting management projects is this project in the Jones Bar Firewise Community. That's the map on the bottom right. We're actually working with the BLM and more than almost 300, I think more than 300, private landowners to do forest management across parcel boundaries as opposed to kind of on individual parcels. And that's a really exciting project that the county and Cal Fire and folks are involved with as well. Next slide. A big flagship project of ours is called Our Forests, partnered with Nevada County Superintendent of Schools and UC Davis Center for Community and Citizen Science. This project is sponsored by the National Science Foundation, where we constructed curriculum for third through fifth graders to learn about what forest health means and how that relates to fire. Then they go out and collect data in these forests to not only learn about forest health, but collect real data that feeds back into management plans of various parcels locally. It's a really exciting community science project. Next slide. Some other ones of examples of successful partnerships with the city. The bottom right, we partnered with the city, just talking to Dawn about this, through both the Stiles Mill and Providence Mine, Department of Toxic Substances Control, and EPA Brownfields Cleanup Projects, where we did both the assessment to see where heavy metals exposures might occur, and then do the remediation of the sites themselves, some mine waste remediation. And then, like I said, the research on human health impacts and exposure pathways through things like garden vegetables and trails is about to be published and will be shared at large. And then kind of our core program again is our water quality program. So the bottom right image is all of our monitoring sites along Deer Creek. The yellow polygon is Nevada City. We have quite a few sites within the Nevada City boundary, including Pioneer Park, which we'll talk about as kind of a case study in a second, below the wastewater treatment plant, and then right here in downtown below the Pine Street Bridge. And then we also monitor extensively in the Bear River watershed, and then partner with groups like Circle and Wolf Creek Community Alliance to monitor at large within Wolf Creek and the Yuba. So really kind of some of the more relevant recent results that we wanted to share was we do also what we call targeted monitoring. So in the summer, when there's lower flows, we have increased concentrations of things like E. coli, nitrates, phosphates, things that could be contaminants of concern to people. Dawn reached out to us because we've worked with the city in the past at Pioneer Park, and there was a concerned resident who got a scratch and that became infected with E. coli. Wanted to see if we had data showing if there was any E. coli spike. We dug back into our data, did some targeted monitoring at that site. We did show a spike at Site 13, so it's the middle bar on the far-left graph, and it was pretty elevated at the time. And then we actually took it a step further. If you want to go one more slide, partnering with Dawn and the city, we used a protocol called EDNA or Environmental DNA, where you can take a sample of water and sequence everything in it and see what species are showing up, just based on cells that they're shedding. And we were testing, basically, could this be a leak from maybe a pipe near the bathroom or the pit toilets or encampments higher upstream? We did find higher up in the stream, there is a lot more human DNA, but actually down there at the main area where this lady was scratched, we had a lot more dog DNA, and this was kind of what we expected. So maybe working with the city to talk about increased signage to ensure people can't really control it that much, but not having their dogs pooping in the creek and increasing exposure to people who recreate there. And that's pretty much it. So we are just a kind of community science group. All this is community-based participatory research. So we really like to say we're just a scientific extension of the community. So really excited about any potential future partnerships with you guys. I've talked to Doug about a few things in the past, and Dawn we've worked with quite a bit as well. But really excited to continue partnering with you guys in any way we can and provide data and scientific support. So.
Great. Thank you so much. Will you remind me your name, please?
Jeff Water.
Jeff Water.
Lotter, sorry.
Oh, I was like, wow.
Actually, our board president, his last name is Waters, but.
That's pretty great. Jeff, do you mind if I ask the council if they have any questions?
Sure.
Sweet. Council, do we have any questions, comments, thoughts?
I have one.
Yeah.
How do you get your information out to the general public?
So a couple of different avenues, and that's something that we're trying to rebuild after losing everything in the Jones Fire. So one thing is actually a partnership with Circle called, I'm blanking on it, RiverDB. I'm thinking of the old database we had. It's called RiverDB, and there's a public website that we're still finishing up that's actually going to have all of our data, Circle's data, and Wolf Creek Community Alliance's data. And you can just look at a map and click on a site, and it can show you data through time, you know, when we have spikes and bacteria, all that kind of stuff. We have regular press releases through our newsletter. We have worked with Dawn to put signage up at Pioneer Park when there is any E. coli spike. So we've reached out to say, hey, there's high E. coli. And then there's been a sign placed temporarily to say, please don't swim. And those are kind of the main avenues for now. And then we also have a couple of things that are just getting going now called SciPub. People can come have a drink and hear about local science. We just had our first one last month. It was a huge success. And then we have our Sierra Science Speaker Series at Sierra College as well as online, and we do dissemination of some of the local research that's going on. Always looking for more avenues for outreach, though. It seems like it's, no matter what we do, there's always still some block somewhere. So even working with the city, if there's any ideas you guys have, we'd love to hear them to increase engagement.
Sure. And I follow you guys on Instagram and social media. I imagine people can sign up for a newsletter and get information that way as well.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Don, for setting that up. That's really great. Okay, now we're going to move on to public comments. Government Code Section 54954.3 provides that any member of the public may address the city council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The council cannot take any action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Please note that comments from the public will also be taken on each agenda item at the time it is heard. Is there any public comment first in the room that is not on the agenda? And what about online?
If there's anyone who wishes to make a public comment on Zoom, please raise your virtual hand.
Seeing none. Great. This is going to be smooth sailing, y'all. Moving right along to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar.
Your turn.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I second.
Great. We have a motion by Gary and a second by Lou. Are there any objections to the motion? Okay, I'm hearing none. The motion carries.
Do we need a vote? Sorry. No?
That's a yes vote.
Is that a yes vote? Yeah.
You could, you could ask for ayes and nays.
All right. Is there, since there's no objection, how about those ayes? Any ayes?
I've got ayes.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Motion still carries. Thank you for clarifying that. That is important.
I have two ayes, but it's spelled differently, so.
Right. All right. Onto business. The first order of business, item 11 on the agenda, is consideration of the South Yuba River Citizens League, also known as Circle, request for monetary sponsorship in the amount of $2,500, fee waiver for city facility use, and special event street closure request for the 2023 Wild and Scenic Film Festival. Sean Grayson, city manager, would you take this?
Sure. Good evening again. This is a similar request from Circle, as in previous years, for sponsorship and fee waivers for the 2023 Wild and Scenic Film Festival. Except for this year, they're adding a request for a small street closure on York Avenue on one of the days. I will turn it over to Eric Dunn, the festival producer, and Levia Campos Meneses. Awesome. Festival director, to provide you a presentation and a brief discussion on the event and the requests.
Excellent. Welcome, y'all.
I'm a short person. Good night, everyone. My name is Levia Campos Meneses, and I'm the Wild and Scenic Film Festival Director. Here with me tonight is our operations director, Eric Dunn, just promoted. Well deserved. Wild and Scenic is a production of Circle, the South Yuba River Citizens League, a nonprofit organization working for 40 years to protect and restore the Yuba River watershed. Wild and Scenic is the organization's main fundraiser. The event was created almost 21 years ago to celebrate Circle winning permanent protections for 39 miles of the South Yuba River under California's Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. As I am sure many of you know, the Wild and Scenic Film Festival takes place annually every winter in Nevada City and Grass Valley, and is a driving force for the community's economy. The last time we had the event in person was in 2020, and we saw approximately 8,000 people join us that year, among them filmmakers, environmental scholars, and social impact activists. After two years festing virtually, we are excited to return to in person in 2023, and we're confident that the event will bring a similar number of people to our town. We're here tonight to tell you more about our plans for next year's film festival and ask for your support in specific areas, which Eric will detail shortly. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and for the support that you have always given us. Your support of the festival is crucial as it helps sustain Circle's year-round restoration projects. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. So as Levia mentioned, I'm Eric Dunn, the operations director, it seems, yes.
Congratulations, or condolences, whichever.
So once again, we're going to be returning to both Grass Valley in Nevada City in February this year for our annual festival. The focus continues to be in Nevada City. We have six venues planned, and the festival, as I mentioned, is now in February, after two decades in January. Really excited about that, and I've had a lot of great feedback so far, and I think it's gonna, it's gonna be a good one. One happy coincidence there is it's also going to overlap with Mardi Gras and the Mardi Gras celebration in town. We plan to reduce our programming during that time and encourage people to attend the parade and get out around town as part of that, while still providing some film programming down in Grass Valley for folks. And we're excited to be hosting 18 world premiere films at this year's festival, a wide variety of adventure films, environmental films, as well as a short film that Circle has created called Yuba is the Heart, which is a celebration of the organization's 40th anniversary that's taking place in 2023. And it's a short film that highlights local community members like Shelley Covert and our science director, amongst others. So as always, in addition to the film programming that we provide, we'll also be offering many free community events as part of the festival. That includes workshops that normally take place here as part of the activist center. That also includes coffee talks, an art exhibition that is in partnership with the Nevada County Arts Council, programming for local schools and classrooms, special guests, a budget-friendly Locals Night on Monday night, and a whole lot more. And so with the 2023 theme of community with an emphasis on unity in mind, we're here again asking for a number of items, as mentioned, that includes the use of City Hall here for our activist center and waiving that fee, the road closure on York, as well as sponsorship at the Steelhead Trout Level, which I think hopefully you have information on what all is entailed in that. And there was also one other item that was the placement of signs around town that would be in alignment with the signs that we've placed around town in the past, keeping in mind ADA access and keeping those, you know, free of sidewalk interference. And so that is all. There's some questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Please, please stay up there. We're going to take some public comment and then maybe take some questions.
Sure.
Yeah, great. Any public comment in the audience out there? All you hordes of people sitting in the chairs.
Nothing for you, Stuart.
No? Going once, going twice? Okay, what about online?
Anyone on Zoom wish to make a public comment on this item, please raise your virtual hand. Not seeing anyone.
All right. Council members, thoughts, questions, comments? I see a shaking head of Gary.
Just, I'm really glad you're coming back.
We feel the same way, yeah. It feels good, and the closer we get, the more it feels real and happening again, so.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Listen, this is one of my favorite events throughout the whole year. I've been honored enough to sit on the jury a couple of times, and I just think it's a fantastic, necessary, and devastating event, just because many of the films carry a lot of weight. Many of them are also inspiring and, and, and fun. It's an intense weekend. I was at first a little bummed to hear that it overlapped with Mardi Gras, but I'm pleased that you are limiting the Nevada City programming during that time and encouraging people who are visiting to come participate in the local festivities. So I'm pleased to hear that. Thank you for considering that. And I'm also really pleased that it no longer, that we have a little bit more time after the holidays and that you guys push the date out a little bit. That feels, feels really good. So great. I'm looking for a motion. What have we got here? I don't have language for this, Sean.
Just couldn't.
I'm looking for a motion to approve, approve the requests of monetary sponsorship in the amount of $2,500, fee waiver for city facility use, and special event street closure request. Oh, real quick, can you tell us about the street closure? Did you, did you mention that?
Sure, yeah. We do annually, and it has, it has taken place on York Street a number of years in the past, and then it's kind of hopped around different years in the past. But we do an Enviro Fair, which is basically a chance for other community organizations, mostly NGOs, to come, have a space and a table at a booth, and be able to tell attendees about what their organization's doing, and yeah, have a place for interacting with the public.
Great. And Mardi Gras seems like a great opportunity to maybe reach some newer folks.
Yeah. The York Street will be Saturday, and then on Sunday, the Chamber's been gracious enough to allow us to join them down on Pine Street, and so we'll have some booths there on Pine Street on that day, on Sunday.
Excellent. Thank you so much. So if I can get a motion for all of that, including the street closure requests for the 2023 Wild and Scenic Film Festival.
I move.
Great. I'm assuming Gary's seconding.
I happily second.
Awesome. We've got a first by Lou, or a motion by Lou, and a second by Gary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Unanimous, three, nothing. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Happy to support you guys.
Thank you so much.
Welcome back.
We look forward to seeing you out in the streets.
Okay, item 12, consideration of an agreement with the Nevada City Chamber of Commerce for the provision of public benefit services and a commercial lease agreement for 130 Main Street, Nevada City, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and lease. Let's hear more, Sean.
Awesome. So it's a typo. That's my fault. It's actually 132 Main Street, same building the other part. 130 Main Street is Harmony Books, which is equally awesome. But as you probably know, the city's partnered with Nevada City Chamber of Commerce for business and tourism support for more than 100 years. In its modern version, this partnership includes the transfer of city funds from the city to the chamber, as well as in-kind fee waivers and lease waivers given to the chamber. The city leases the property at 132 Main Street to the chamber for use as the visitor center, and there are offices with no fee. We don't currently have a contract for the transfer of funds or the in-kind fees or lease waivers, and there's not a current lease agreement for the property. So this is resolving all of those issues all in one action. We've created an agreement that will establish what the chamber will be doing with the funds provided, and a process that will require them to come back to the council each year in the budget workshop and to provide you a presentation on what they did relative to the agreement in the previous year, and, and ask for funds and activities to be supported in subsequent years. So then the council will have the opportunity to hear that report and direct staff to provide the appropriate funding levels in the, in the future budget. Because this provides a much more transparent accountability measure for the taxpayers' money that we're transferring to the chamber. And we get a good deal for it, but we haven't been able to articulate that to the public. So that's what we're asking for you to help us with this evening. The agreement requires, is for the remainder of this fiscal year, and then, as I said, in April, they'll come to you in the budget workshop for next fiscal year. We budget on a July 1 to June 30. They budget on a calendar year, so it splits both ways this first time. On the go-forward, we'll both know where we are. What's in the agreement broadly is several categories. One is city supporter partnership. That includes the staffing of their visitor center. If you don't know, they will make change for you, so you can get quarters for our meters. That's important for people, especially they travel from far away and they don't carry coins.
I didn't know that.
And if you didn't know that, and you step in for quarters, then ask them about the Yuba Bucks gift card program. That's also very awesome. They maintain the events calendar for Nevada City, and they provide shared branding for social media posts. They maintain the extra roof lights of the historic downtown, those white lights that go along during the holidays all along the roof lines of our buildings. They procure and coordinate the raising, raising spelled with an S, not a Z, and decorating a holiday tree in Robinson Plaza, although I guess technically they coordinate the raising, also the tearing down part. They also do the greenery on the lampposts and all throughout town. And they manage outreach, merchant outreach as well. Under the business support category, they have 14 tourism brochures, monthly merchant meetings for the downtown and Seven Hills. They are producing and updating a retail attraction retention brochure that's new for this year. They coordinate with the city on new business leads for leasing or purchase of commercial property. Stuart's been very active in us meeting with people trying to fill all of our vacant storefronts, maintaining a vacant space listing on the chamber website. They'll be updating the business wayfinding list and map for both the historic district and the Seven Hills district on an annual basis. They maintain all of the flags for events throughout the downtown for all of our holiday events. They do the flower baskets in the downtown and get volunteers to water. One amazing volunteer, as it were. We were successful in killing our flower basket in front of City Hall this year. We'll try not to do that this year, but please don't hold that against the chamber. They publish a monthly tourism newsletter and monthly radio spot on KVMR. That last category is event production. As everybody knows, they do seven events in the downtown, although most of those have multiple occurrences. So you heard them talk about, Circle talk about Mardi Gras, the first event, Earth Day Art Walk, four nights, Village Market Day, Fourth of July, summer nights, three nights, Constitution Day, which is really, has been a city and chamber partnership on the management side in conjunction with the Constitution Day Commission, which has worked well, but the chamber is going to be helping us out with managing it, just like they do all their other activities. And added this year, cool Halloween event, and then, of course, our three days and two nights of Victorian Christmas. We put in that they're going to produce one event in Seven Hills beginning in 2023, which is, I'm looking forward to. Don't know what that's going to be yet, but coming soon to you. And they produce brochures for all that. So that's just a snippet. So basically, when they come back to you at budget workshop, they'll report on all those categories, what they did, and how well they performed, and then ask for, you know, more money and more categories in the future year. So for those efforts, they'll continue to receive the seven and a half percent of our transient occupancy tax that they have been receiving on a quarterly basis, and then kind total of $29,400, which includes the no-cost use of the visitor center, which has a market value of $24,000, and approximately $7,400 in fee waivers for facility use and special events, although I would note that obviously they generate far more than that. And then there's an attached commercial lease agreement for the visitor center. It's the same standards and conditions that we've applied to other leases, including the Harmony Books next door, which again is the 130. The chamber will have 132. And Stuart Baker, the chamber executive director, already stepped up to the lectern, so I will hand it over to him.
Great. Thank you, Sean. Yeah, speaking on behalf of the chamber, I'd like to say how much we really are incredibly enjoying and appreciating the ever-growing connection that we have with the city. Sean attends our board meetings. He provides a report to us. We have two council members, Councilmember Cece and Klein, who attend the board meetings as a city liaison, offering their perspective and guidance. We, we have a monthly meeting in downtown and at Seven Hills, where Sean and Lou and Adam also attend, as well as our chief of police, and as well as for Seven Hills. And those interactions are incredibly valuable. I mean, when I came here, I, we used to hear people saying, ah, you know, we're a small town, but we don't seem to communicate very well. And I feel like people give me very different feedback now. They feel like they're informed. They feel like people are listening to what their concerns are. And so if the chamber does nothing else but improve the communication with everyone else in the community, I think, I think personally it's a really great thing, because that's what I've seen that has changed. I mean, you know, the quality of the, the council and the city staff leadership has made a massive difference for us, made our job a lot easier. And so we really appreciate and also putting this all down on paper, because it just, you know, it's nice for us to be able to show, okay, this is what we do, this is what we're doing, and this is ideas where we can go in the future. And when we say, well, we can't do X, you'll know. And when we say, "Well, we can't do X," you'll know that it's basically because there's so many other things that we are doing. So, anyway. So, yeah, you know, and I'm looking forward as well, or we're looking forward in the coming year to a public art ordinance process that happens, because we really see that, especially in Seven Hills, as providing a lot more opportunities for placemaking for that community, which we really are, it, it, it will just be a great place. And having an event next year to start that off, and really building the community that we feel that that area deserves to have. And with Cashin's Field coming on board, and we're also working with the city on providing a, we won't want to call it a basket yet, because we don't know exactly what it's going to look like, but for each of the new residents, so they can start exploring their community, hopefully walking and seeing how close everything is. So we're very much in tune with that as well. So looking forward to seeing the growth in Seven Hills, looking forward to keeping our downtown incredibly vibrant. And I'm here to answer any questions that you have on the list or thoughts on that. So, anyway, is there anything?
Awesome, thank you, Stuart and Sean. I'm going to go to public comment, and then we'll come back to the council. Any public comments?
All the people in the back of the room don't want to comment.
All right, council members, questions, comments, queries? Yes, Councilmember Peterson.
I saved my, what's left of my voice just for this, this agenda item. First, I want to say that I, I really appreciate this, the agreement. It's so important, you know, that which gets measured gets managed, and we do have a responsibility for accountability. Thank you, Sean, I know you and I had this conversation many times. We really need to articulate, you know, it's a simple, what do you get for the money sort of thing? But by articulating it and laying it out, we now can work with it and measure it as Stuart so carefully articulated. But Stuart, I'd also like to personally thank you for your leadership and vision. Our city has been, as we all know, we're coming out of some, some tough stuff, but one of the, you know, I think of the three-legged stool of, of the, of government, business, and citizens, and the business was, the Chamber's been so embedded in that, and we know that that sort of went dark for a while. We're fortunate enough to acquire your services in rebuilding of this, and your rebuilding of the board and the great volunteers that participate with the Chamber. But it's, it's really allowed us to go in the direction we need to go. I still look forward to working with you, but I really appreciate what you've brought to the table. It's been absolutely critical to the success of what we're trying to pull off here. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Gary. Lou?
I'd just like to say, as sitting in on the Chamber of Commerce board meetings, and the Seven Hills, and the downtown merchants meetings, it is wonderful to see the merchants engaged, and I really thank you for your leadership in those meetings.
Thanks, Lou. Yeah, just echoing what Gary and Lou said, you know, you made a comment praising council and city staff, and just want to send that right back at you. A dynamic that always, I always found peculiar that predates you and me is that there was a rivalry between the Chamber and the city, and that just seems so silly to me. I'm sorry. We're going to shift gears here just a little bit, and I'm going to need a motion. Funny guy, okay. All right, so yeah, so it just seems silly not to be partners and, and work for the betterment of Nevada City together. I know the Seven Hills merchants are really excited to be organized and meeting. They mentioned they've enjoyed the chief being at those meetings, so thank you, chief, for making an effort to show up to those, making those new connections. And like Gary said, too, this is just part of Nevada City doing its job to come in accordance with all of our things that are on the books, right? Just to, to help have processes for accountability and to help understand things better and to have more appropriate information and oversight of, of all the things. So thank you so much. I'm looking for a motion to...
Is there one thing I could just quickly add?
Yeah.
I just want to say as well, I want to give a shout out to the small staff we have for Lynn and for Libby. They do incredible work.
Absolutely.
Lynn does events like, I just can't even imagine how, I mean, it's so in her blood, and, I mean, you look at Victorian Christmas, and, you know, she's just so in her element, and it's, it's wonderful to have staff like that. Libby unfortunately is going to be retiring in early 2023, so we are looking for an office manager part-time. I'm sorry, I had to put in a plug, but if anyone is interested out there in, we, we are entertaining opportunity, or the opportunity to find someone good to fill that. And lastly, the volunteers that we have in the Chamber office for all our events, they're tireless, they really come forward, and they're fantastic, so, thanks.
Excellent, thank you, Stuart. I am looking for a motion to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and lease.
I, I move that we authorize the city manager to do what you said.
Excellent.
I second.
So we have a, a motion by Councilmember Peterson, eloquently put, and a second by Councilmember Cece. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed? None, that's three to zero, motion carries, thank you so much.
Great, thanks, Daniela.
Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you, Stuart.
And then finally, for our agenda, item 13, a consideration of the purchase of two new Chevy Tahoe police patrol vehicles from future Chevrolet, Chevrolet of Sacramento in the amount of $126,843, and authorize the city manager to rescind the previously issued purchase order to Enterprise for the vehicles. Take it away, chief.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, so as you mentioned, this is in regards to two new patrol Tahos. If you remember, if this sounds like deja vu, because we did talk about this back in September, unfortunately, at that time, we had agreed to make a contract with Enterprise Fleet to purchase those vehicles. We were unable to, or rather, Enterprise was unable to locate two Tahos for our needs. So our staff, our excellent staff, went out and did find the Tahos, Fleet Tahos, which is very important, because you do save substantially on MSRP when you purchase fleet vehicles, somewhat locally, actually. So we're looking to rescind the previous contract and purchase these Tahos from here, local, not locally, but it's in Sacramento.
Great, thanks, chief. Any public comments?
Anybody on Zoom wish to make a public comment? Please raise your virtual hand. Seeing none.
All right, council members, questions, comments, concerns? No, and just, and just to reiterate, this is not new. This is, the only thing that's new is the vendor. Councilmember Peterson, I recall you had some questions about Enterprise. Were you the one that had questions about Enterprise?
You're muted.
We'll never know.
It could have been. I have a lot of experience with this kind of purchasing. I'm glad to see that, I know the chief's doing his job on this and working on it. I'm sorry, I'm satisfied. Another good job, chief.
Excellent, so I am looking for a motion to approve this request.
I so move to approve the request.
I second.
Great, motion by Councilmember Cece, second by Councilmember Peterson. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Nobody, 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 three, nothing, motion carries, thank you, chief. Easy peasy. And just like that, we're moving on to the city manager's report, please.
Awesome, so it's the last meeting of 2023, or 2022, however you want to count.
You and Neil.
Last meeting of 2022. So I want to say thank you to the council for your leadership in 2022 and for what will be your leadership in 2023. Really would like to thank the community for their engagement. It is an incredible thing to see how engaged this community is in curating their destiny. And, you know, it makes, it can be challenging for staff, but it makes every decision that we're able to put in front of you that much better. And lastly, I'd like to thank the employees for keeping our little slice of heaven in Nevada City up and running through some significant challenges over the last couple of years. So I look forward to what 2023 brings us. One quick note, the business fee waiver program was on the consent calendar. We've given out more than 70% of the allocated funds at this point as credit, but only used about 5% of it so far, and that's normal, because not everyone's just ready to go with their projects. We have seen 25 business licenses under the program, and 15 of those are new businesses to town. So most of them, small micro businesses, which is great. A reminder to those at home, it's easy to sign up, just email me with your interest. I'll reply with seven questions that you need to answer, and then I can issue the credit. And we'll continue to accept the interest over the holidays, and I'm hopeful the first meeting in January, I'll be coming back to the council and asking you to increase that cap, so that we can continue to enroll people in the program. So send me that email, even on Christmas, even on New Year's, we'll take it and get people locked in. And that is all I have for you this evening, Madam Vice Mayor.
Great, thank you so much, Sean, all good news. Councilmembers, any reports or future agenda items? Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, along the lines of Sean, it's been quite a year. And thank you, Sean, for your commitment and dedication to Nevada City. I was just recently explaining to someone that they can't believe that we got someone as good as you, and sometimes neither can I. So it's, it's great to have you here with your hands on the wheel, and clearly, what you're doing is, is starting to bear fruit, and it's highly visible. Again, we have, as you noted, highly dedicated staff that's really hung in there and continues to do their job, and most of the time with a smile on their face. That's a big deal. Yesterday, Sean, Doug, myself, and Dawn attended, the county did an update on their combined resiliency recreation master plan that they're developing. It was a fascinating meeting, a wide breadth of countywide participants, a well-facilitated meeting. And I think that there's some enormous future potential for our city's participation. It gives us an opportunity, one of the other pieces that, you know, so much, we've brought so much forward, but our, how we show up regionally is so critical and so important, and this looks like a really good place to get active. So that was a good meeting, I was glad to be there, and I think the county did a good job in running that meeting. So other than that, to wish everyone a happy holidays, my report is done.
Excellent, thank you so much, Gary.
Just two reports, and then a question and a general comment. First report is on the Fire Safety Advisory Committee, which finished up finalizing and wording precisely its goals for the upcoming year, and they'll present that to the next city council meeting. I want to thank all the members of the Fire Safety Advisory Committee for being diligent and coming together and working through the process of getting that crystallized down to four really solid goals. The Business Committee will be meeting for the first time in January, and will start its process for doing the same thing that the Fire Safety Advisory Committee just finished doing. Sean, is it appropriate at this time to mention that we'll be talking about an issue that is on, at least some people's minds, about the farmers market and business licenses?
You could share that, you'd be interested in putting that on that agenda, sure?
Yes, the, because members of the people who participate in the farmers markets need to have business licenses, that has become a question and an issue for some of them. We would like to talk about that at the meeting on January 3rd, and welcome public input. There's already been some input in the public comments for this meeting, and I think we've also received email on the subject. So just let you know, January 3rd, that will be on the agenda if you want to speak about that.
Look for that agenda to be posted right about the time you're at your New Year's Eve parties.
Yes, yes, so I, that's one of the reasons I wanted to mention it now, because, you know, by then, people will be kind of distracted. And finally, this is the end of my first six months as a city council member. I want to thank very much the existing city council members, the continuing ones, Daniela and Gary and Doug, for mentoring this newbie. And I also want to thank Adam for being a good partner on the committees that we are jointly serving on. I couldn't have asked for better support from all of you and the staff. It's been wonderful, thank you.
Thanks, Lou. Yeah, I met, as a, as a quick report back, the vibrancy committee met. Councilmember Klein and I are excited to have our first meeting in January. Unfortunately, I don't have the dates in front of me, but I, we will make those known. As well as Doug and I met for the Housing Committee, and that meeting will be coming up towards the end of January, stay tuned.
January 23rd for that one.
January 23rd for...
For housing.
For housing.
And February 2nd for vibrancy.
Thank you so much. And the public is, is welcome to both of those, and we will be reaching out to specific individuals as well with invitations. Excited to move forward on both of those important issues. And yeah, just want to echo Lou and, and Gary, you know, and Sean. It's been a wild year. It's been a wild two years. I feel really good wrapping this year. I feel like we're in a good place. We have a new, great chief of police, we have a new, great city manager, we have solid staff across the board that are working really well together. We have a functioning planning commission. Talked to my planning commissioner today, Amy Cobden. She's really enjoying the, the chemistry, the group chemistry, and working with her colleagues. And just really, really pleased to hear that. I am excited for the future and next year to see what sort of good trouble we can make. And with that, I am going to ask for a movement for adjournment.
I, I move to adjourn.
Hey, all right.
Not a movement, a motion, I, I got confused there.
Thank you, thank you. And any second?
I will second that.
Great, meeting adjourned. All those in favor? Yes, okay, all right, meeting adjourned.